It's finally getting a little cooler, hope it lasts. It's good to see everyone. So, welcome to the August Walnut Village Town Hall. Got a few things to go over today. So, first thing is the state of the organization. Just a reminder, it's August 31st for us, from 2:30 PM to about 4:30 PM. You can join either via Zoom or by phone. And we had originally sent out a flyer with the call-in information and Zoom information. And if you have misplaced that and you want to join, please see Ernest and he can get you another copy. And then if you don't have a computer and you'd like to just go ahead and be part of the Zoom meeting in the LLC, we welcome you to come down to that. We'll be getting some new speakers that we need to attach to the laptop so that you can hear everything. Yes? Actually, if you want to send the next, can you give the next slide? Yeah, we can, we can go ahead and email you this, Dawn, and you can just click on that link. Okay. And again, this is the flyer, so if you need another one, please ask Ernest. And, next slide. Thank you to everyone who submitted responses to the survey. And you can imagine with the amount of people we have, everyone's kind of got a different opinion about things. So, we got quite a few different responses, but there were some common themes. And so regarding capital expenditures, we, seven people said we want to paint the building. We've been kind of holding off on doing that simply because we want to be consistent or in the same tones as what Summer House 2 is going to be. So, we wanted to kind of hold off, but we know it's necessary, especially some of the stucco repairs that we need to do. So, we'll be working on that. We also, and we just need to find more room, got quite a few requests for bocce ball, shuffleboard, croquet, and badminton courts, ping pong table. So, that's good to see you guys are wanting to recreate a little bit more. We had eight responses of people who want a gardening area. And I know that we've got some raised planter boxes, so I don't know if that would suffice. I think you guys want to kind of get your, your hands in the dirt. So, we'll see what we can do about that. Quite a few folks want internet speed upgrades. A lot of people want to replace the chairs in the pack in the LLC. So, we'll continue to work on that. They have to be stackable, that's kind of our issue. Because space is an issue. Something that I really think needs to be done, install more automatic door openers for the locker rooms, the post, the red chair lounge. In-house messaging system. Movie theater, keep in mind that's going to be in Summer House 2. And solar panels to reduce electricity costs. And I think that's a good idea as we continue to move to a greener economy. It'd be nice to be able to save where we can. Cost-saving suggestions, cut back on paper printing, reduction in onsite programs and entertainers. There were some folks who said, "Don't cut back on entertainers." So, we're going to try to walk the middle of that. Instructing residents to turn off or raise AC when not in the apartment. Solar panels, food waste, smaller portions, water efficiency. Only allow EVs to charge during low-grade hours. No reduction in frontline staff, look at other areas. And cost-saving wherever possible to reduce annual rate increases. Amen. I agree. So, it was part of my job, having to give you guys those letters. Okay, so also in the survey, how would you rate your overall dining experience? By and large, most folks said good, very good, some even exceptional. We'll continue to try to move the needle towards exceptional. How would you rate our maintenance department? And Ethan and his team are doing a very good job, according to most of you. How would you rate our life enrichment and fitness programming? Most folks think it's very good or exceptional. And then how would you rate your overall experience with Walnut Village? Most folks say very good. We're going to work our hardest to get most folks over to exceptional. And how would your experience at Walnut Village be improved? No point system. Opening, yeah. Heck, yeah. Opening the bistro for dinner? That's a hooray. Keep rate increases under 4% per year? More opportunities, more opportunities to meet fellow residents? Faster hot water in the morning? Faster service in the dining room? Better sound system for resident and town hall meetings? Transportation on weekends, more drivers? Improved quality of food? And incentives to get residents to participate in activities slash better participation? So, we'll think about those, come up with some creative ideas. Would welcome your creative ideas, too. So, as we continue to live with COVID, our favorite topic, I'm starting to bury it, so it's not front and center. And I think, I think, I hope, we're on the downswing of the surge that we just experienced. So, currently, there's one resident and no team members currently positive. The BA5 variant did impact our community, starting about mid-June, late-June, June 20th or so. We started getting positive after positive after positive. So, all told, from the middle of June until now, eight residents have tested positive during this timeline. Eighteen team members have tested positive since June. And as a reminder, please wear your mask correctly and please make sure your guests wear their masks. Again, we're living with this, and I think it is going to become more and more like the flu. A reminder, the evacuation drill, August 24th at approximately 2:15 PM. It's shift change, and so we're starting, meaning the staff and I, at around 2:00, 2:05, they'll get their assignments and then they will come to those of you who are, who are participating. Stay in your apartment. This is for the staff to go through the motion of getting you out of your apartment safely and to the assembly area, and then taking the head count. If you're not going to be participating, Ernest and I are going to be putting a pink post-it on your door to indicate to staff that they're not supposed to evacuate, that you're not participating. So, please don't pull off your pink sticky, or they may come and try to evacuate you. And just an aside, the UCI CareDex team will be here to observe. They want to continue to see how we manage and operate. Which brings me to the Great American Shakeout. That's going to be a little bit different. That's October 20th, and that's going to be led wholly by the earthquake committee. So, staff is really just going to be available for mock instances where nursing is needed in an apartment or maintenance is needed in an apartment. So, the earthquake committee, which is so good and so organized, is going to be able to spend the first 20, 25 minutes or so doing what they do. And then first responders will be showing up about 20, 25 minutes after the drill starts, which is a more realized, realistic timeframe. Ultimately, if you're going through the, your scenarios, and then the first responders show up, and then we're going to be able to utilize that UCI CareDex technology towards the end of the drill with the first responders. And that's enough for me for now. I'm going to invite Ethan to come on up.
Thank you, Deborah. Morning, everybody. Everybody's doing good? Nice to see everybody back again. So, I have a few things to go over. Guys could hear me. First one is the, our HVAC. I know a lot of people have been asking, you know, when the units will be coming in, if their unit is going to be changed and whatnot. We have them on order. Unfortunately, with the industry right now, a lot of parts and supplies are on backorder. So, we are still looking at about six to eight weeks before we get any of the new units in. And as it gets closer, we will be contacting those of you that are due for a unit change to schedule that with you accordingly. If anybody is, wants to know sooner, please feel free to give me a call if you're wondering if your unit is, is one of the units being changed or not. Okay. Next we got is the parking garage access control. We've been working diligently on that for the last few weeks. We're probably about a week or two away from completing that. And that will include all the access from the garage, up through the stairs, elevators, and all of the hallway access into the building. So, you will need your fog to get into the building from the garage. We will do a notification, let you know before we actually send that live, just so everybody knows. The new floor scrubbing machine, we ordered a few months back. Again, companies or our supplies and stuff are all on backorder, so we, we had a delay on that. Hopefully, we'll be getting that, I believe, around mid-September, late September sometime. And we'll get started on that. So, you'll see a big green machine rolling around the property. And that's the unit that's going to help us conserve a lot more water to cleaning the facility and whatnot. On Monday, 8/22, we have fire extinguisher service. So, you will see a service company going around the building, picking up all the fire extinguishers so we can get them renewed and tagged and certified for the year. Yes?
Will that fire extinguisher service also look at resident?
No, we, we're only, according to the fire department, required to do the building fire extinguisher. So, if you have a fire extinguisher that's out of date, I would suggest just purchasing a new one. Because the, the ones we have are much larger for the building fires and whatnot. Okay, work orders. I've noticed, oh, BJ, you have a question?
I don't know how to use a fire extinguisher, but if there was a fire nearby apartment, could somebody help me?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we would definitely be out there. An alarm would go off and we would definitely be up to your area because it tells us exactly where it's at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Work orders, I want to thank everybody for helping out in that. I noticed that a lot of the work orders are definitely going to the front desk now, which helps us track everything and keep everything in order. Again, if, if you are turning in a work order and you're not getting a response within 48 hours, please feel free to give me a call or call the front desk again and find out what the situation is. Because that's going to help me kind of figure out where the discrepancies are. And if also, when you're putting in your work order, if you can kind of just take a note, you know, who took the work order and what time it was, that'll help me as well, just to kind of alleviate any future problems. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Please welcome Kim to talk about dining.
Good morning, everyone. You may have noticed the Grove menu for this week looked a little strange. It was missing Sunday. The reason for that is we are moving to a Sunday through Saturday menu. So, the menu that you get today for next week will be Sunday through Saturday. It won't have any missing days. That was in response to a request from one of the residents. Beginning next week, we're going to replace the hot appetizer for happy hour with an assorted cheese and cracker platter. And that will happen on Wednesdays and Saturdays, just to break up the monotony a little bit. Okay, I hope everyone is going to join us for the Hawaiian luau on Thursday, the 25th of August. It is a complimentary event with entertainment, Hawaiian dinner, and tropical cocktails. So, please sign up in the activities book in the post. If you've already signed up, there's no need to sign up again. We want to reserve those spots for people who have not signed up. Don't make any reservations at the host desk. There will be open seating. There will be eight chairs around each table. So, if you'd like to put together a table of people you would like to sit with, feel free to do that on your own. And when you get to the event, just have everybody sit together at whichever table you would like to sit at. Entertainment starts at three. I'm sorry, at four. And then the dinner buffet starts at five. All right, and staffing updates. So, we did have a new cook start this week. His name is Christian Cruz. He likes to go by Dwayne. He started on Tuesday and he's fitting, I guess that's his middle name. He started on Tuesday. He's fitting in very nicely and doing a nice job. We're still looking for one more cook because our most recently hired cook did not work out and resigned. So, we need to replace him. And we have four servers who are in various stages of the hiring process currently. If they all come on board and get trained, we should finally be able to open the bistro for dinner. Can I answer any questions? Yes?
How many cooks do you actually have?
I would say a dozen. Yep. You're cooking for the bistro, the Grove, as well as Summer House. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, please welcome Susan for sales and marketing update.
Good morning, everyone. We have some good news in the marketing department. We have a new move-in today. Her name is Sharon Voight. She is moving into 345. She had been a physician's assistant. I think she's going to fit in quite nicely with all of you. And she's looking forward to meeting several of the residents and joining a lot of Brian's programs. The other item that we have is that the sales and marketing team has a new marketing assistant, Diana Nguyen. She is a recent graduate of UC San Diego in international business and design. She's been in training at Claremont yesterday all day to see how they run their community. On Monday and Tuesday, she'll be up at the home office and training for our, our programs that we use in marketing. And she's shadowing, you'll see her around. She can stand up if she wants. I don't want to embarrass her, but that's Diana. And we're very happy to have her to join us. Marina and I took quite, quite some time to find her. And we both feel that she's a great fit for Walnut Village. The other is, yes, Dawn?
Is she a replacement or an addition?
Uh, she isn't, well, we haven't had a sales and marketing assistant for quite some time. So, she is, I guess, a replacement from the former. Marina had been the assistant for many years and then got promoted maybe about eight months ago to the manager position. And who we had as a sales and marketing assistant in between was Eriseli, who had been the life enrichment individual for the care center. So, she came over for a short period of time and worked with Marina and Meredith. But no, it's, it's, it's kind of a, it's not a new position. It is a position that we've always had. The other thing is the Hawaiian luau. Kim's talked about it. I know Judy's going to talk about it, too. That we're, Judy and I are kind of co-op-ing, you know, spreading the wealth around for this. So, I'm inviting our VIP prospects to it also. So, we have a few that will be, will be joining you for the performance, having a small tour. So, they're coming around 3:30, so a little bit earlier than the performance starts. The other is, we had a direct mail piece. It's dropping today. It's for a September 21st event that we're having. It's more of an educational, how, a lot of you that have moved here probably did go to some of them. It's a downsizing, but I'm also adding the real estate trends because there's so much changing in the market right now. So, that will be starting on the 21st of September. And we sent that out to about 5,000 people. So, usually when we have that, the average, we usually get is around 30 to 40 people that will attend these events. So, that's, that's it. But do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And please welcome Pam. She's going to give you some updates in the care department.
Hey, Debbie. Hi, everybody. We're going to talk a little bit about our flu clinic coming up next month on the 14th. I want to apologize, when we put the flyers out in the post, I only put one in each box. Big mistake. A lot of you, there's two in your apartment. There's more forms at the front desk right now. If you need another form, please get those in as soon as possible because I do need to turn them into Rite Aid, at least a week before flu. I keep asking every year if it is the senior high dose. We only do the high dose for this, this group. We do have the lower dose for the staff that wants to do it here as well. We are going to be in the lifelong learning center like we have in the past. John again will be here, our pharmacist from Rite Aid. I did make a mistake. I talked to John yesterday and they are now accepting Scan. I had wrote on your letter that we were not accepting Scan, but we will. The out-of-pocket, I was asked, it's going to be $89.99 if you're Kaiser, if you don't want to get it at Kaiser, if you want to get it here, that is the out-of-pocket price. I was asked that question. If you have insurance that's not listed, again, once you fill out your, your form, I do make copies of all of your insurance information and they run it at the pharmacy prior to coming here. So, if there's an issue with your insurance, you're going to know about it prior to the flu clinic day. Again, I'm strongly encouraging everybody to get their flu shot. We all got our COVID shots. I think we're a little burnt out on getting poked, but this is important. Again, if you receive a shot at your doctor's office through Kaiser or some of you like to get your shots at your doctor's office, please let me know because I do have to put those in the computer. And if we do get an outbreak of flu, the state is going to ask me the percentage of you that did get your flu vaccine. And the only way I'm going to know that is if I have it in the computer. Are there any questions, Dawn?
If we're not here on the marketing, are there some kind of arrangement that we can schedule at every time?
I can ask John if he can come back. BJ?
How about the pneumonia shot?
We've been asked that in the past, to have a pneumonia shot clinic. And we've only had like a handful of people that have wanted to do it. Most of you, again, are getting that at your doctor's office. I can, I can put something out there, but normally, we've been asked that every year and we get very few responses for that because most of you have already got it through your doctor's office.
Are we going to be getting the new COZA booster from Monet?
We don't have any information on that yet. I know there's a lot of chatter about a new booster. We don't have any information on that yet. But when we do get that information, we will share it with you. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, I think right now, though, that, that booster that addresses the Omicron variant is still being reviewed by FDA. And hopefully, it'll be authorized in September. And if we're able to do another booster clinic, we can do that. And then we'll have the flu clinic and we will be pink cushions by that time. Anyway, Pastor Les is here to give you updates about spiritual.
Hello? It's good to see you. It's good to be here. Our regular and ongoing chapel events, we have a regular Sunday morning worship service weekly, 10:30 in the chapel, 10:30 here. We don't have it in the pack, we have it in the chapel. And that's, that's a regular worship service. And anyone is, is welcome to come and be a part of that. It's an inter-denominational service. We have, we have several different denominations represented. We have our regular weekly Bible studies on Wednesday and Thursday at 10:30 in the LLC. We also have a monthly bereavement support. Oh, by the way, about the Bible studies, they are discussion-oriented studies. So, it's not just me talking and teaching. There's a lot of that, but there's also a lot of people giving their own interpretation. And people disagree and, and we talk and we learn. And, and my theory is that spiritual growth doesn't come from getting all the answers. Spiritual growth comes from struggling with the question. And I would, as I've said before, I would, I would be very wary about having answers to all the questions. I would much rather feel comfortable with questioning all the answers. We have a monthly bereavement support group. Actually, it's for anyone who wants to come to talk about their grief process, things that are going on in their lives. It's not a large group. We have maybe one or two people that will attend. And it's the first Wednesday of the month at 2 o'clock in the vault. We also offer a weekly Summer House Bible study and brief worship service every Tuesday at 10:30. And that's at Summer House, and we have a good time there. And right now, we're offering chaplain services to local facilities in the area, in, in the Fullerton Anaheim area. And for September, I will be visiting St. Elizabeth's Healthcare in Fullerton on Thursday afternoons. So, as a, as a group, we are offering pastoral care, chaplain services to, to facilities that are, that are in need of such. We have some upcoming chapel events. We have the newsletter that will begin the first week in September. We have the acknowledgement celebration of Jewish holidays at the end of September, early October. The time and date for those will be, will be announced later. Regular ongoing chaplain services, we have the spiritual, the religious, and the emotional. The spiritual, of course, has to do with the connection with the transcendent, something above and beyond us, as well as awareness of the inner life. And those two things, I believe, are very pertinent to what it means to, to be alive. We have the religious. One way of expressing a person's spirituality is through their religion. That includes religious practice, church services, et cetera. We offer church services here. We offer the Bible studies here as part of our religious practice. And for those who choose to attend a worship service off-campus, if you're in need of transportation, we'll provide that for you, too. We encourage any type of religious practice that, that meets your need, that fits well for you. And of course, we have the emotional, which consists of personal counseling, bereavement, end-of-life counseling, personal support, small group gathering. Many of you have taken advantage of this. If that's something that would benefit you, that would help you, I would invite you to, to take advantage of personal counseling, personal support. We offer that. And again, many of you have taken advantage of that, and I invite you to, to continue doing so. And as always, when the doors open here, I'm usually in the office. And I really appreciate those of you that come by and visit every now and then. Keep doing that. I really enjoy seeing you and having you come by and, and visit and, and we talk for a while. Thanks.
Thank you, chaplain. And now Judy's going to talk about fun.
And I'm going to stand over here because when I stand behind that podium, I can't see you. And if I can't see you, you can't see me. So, we have a lot going on. And right now, I'm not going to stop bringing in entertainment because I think that's one thing that brings all of us together in the community. And one of the, one of the statements was, you wanted more activities where you could gather and bring more together. So, I'm going to continue doing that. Is that okay with you? Is that okay with you? I am really excited to introduce Haley. Haley is in the back. She's front and center on everything that we're doing. I have asked her to pick up the task of doing the bios, the resident bios. That is one thing I have put on the back burner through COVID. Now that I have a wonderful lady with me, we're going to start doing that. I'm going to call and ask you if you would like me to have Haley come to visit with you to do the interview, and then we'll set up the appointments. But she's going to be the one that's actually doing the interviews and writing up. So I'm hoping that that wall outside the bistro is going to be full again. Well, we have a lot going on. Actually, I'm going to start out negatively. Saturday, August 20th, we have canceled that. The reason we've canceled it is because of lack of participation. I am trying to put onto the calendar things that you all used to like to do. We used to be able to take a whole bus full. This time, we had four. And as all of the departments are trying to be economically proper and fiscally responsible, I have canceled that particular outing. And it's on a Saturday. But we're going to keep trying. I promise you, I'm going to keep trying. I have a special event on Monday, and you will get some more information about that a little bit later in the weekend. But Aaron Copenhagen will be in the Red Chair Lounge. He is a gentleman that plays the acoustical guitar, and everybody really does enjoy him. You'll have more information coming on that. On Tuesday, August 23rd and August 30th, Elaine is going to do a Who Am I? We had so many people that signed up for it, and the Red Chair, the LLC couldn't accommodate it. I've decided to put it on two different days. Please check the book to make sure your name is on it. The first week is full. The second week has some openings in it. And we're still working on the replacement book. My book, Never Ever Returns. So somebody has it, but that's okay. I know how to do it again. Yes? Pardon? Elaine is going to do that. Elaine Quick is going to do the Who Am I? She's going to present her story. That's what Who Am I is. Who Am I is a presentation of everybody's life stories. And that gives me an opportunity to ask you. I need more people to sign up to be part of it. We will help you if you want to do a virtual presentation, if you want to do PowerPoint. I'm here to help, and gentlemen over there, I think, will help. And volunteering here, yes, and so will Sandy. So we're here to help. It's been a wonderful opportunity. Every single one of our Who Am Is have been full, overfull. And that's why we decided to put it on two days. And I can continue to do that. On Wednesday, August 24th, at 7:30, it'll be a night with Babwada, and that's going to be in the Bistro Courtyard. And that's being sponsored by the library. So I plead, please, come to it, call Michelle. You all received a little flyer on it. The library committee is the one that is sponsoring that. And that will be August 24th at 7:30. So bring a jacket if it gets a little bit cool. Ah, we've got the, we have our luau. It is going to be a wonderful evening. Dress appropriately if you have, I mean, I shouldn't say appropriately. Yes, all dress appropriately. If you have Hawaiian, any type of Hawaiian clothing, we're going to take pictures. We're very fortunate that Dean Lowe is going to come back again. Thank you, Pam. And he's going to take pictures. I will give you copies of the pictures. We'll do backgrounds. You'll have lays. It's going to be a really fun evening. If any of you were here, I think in 2018 or 2017, we did a huge one with the auxiliary. This is going to be just like that. It'll be in the courtyard. There'll be lots of umbrellas set up, lots of tables set up. Please be patient with us on seating. It is my hope and my desire that those of you who have a mobility device of some sort, that everybody's going to have good seats, but we're going to put you around the outside. Because last time we did this, we found out we got everybody seated, but people had to go to the restroom in the middle of it. And once we got you in, couldn't get you out. So this time, we hope that we're going to be a little bit more organized and do that. But please plan on coming. Please, I'm going to reiterate it. Sign up in the book. It's only so that the kitchen has count. And try not to sign up twice. If you've already signed up, that's wonderful. We're expecting you, and we'll entertain you. I'm going to move quickly here. Labor Day, I'm going to be here on Labor Day, which will be September 5th. We're going to have bingo like we normally do at 2 o'clock. At 3:30, we'll have ice cream novelty treats. Then at 4 o'clock in the Bistro Courtyard, South Coast Brass will be here to entertain. Special event, couple things. It's 9/11 again. J.J. O'Neill has been here a couple of times to present his story and to present his slides. Even if you've seen it before, it's one of those opportunities that you will never forget. He was actually on, he was actually there. And his photographs are some that nobody had ever seen before. He has not shared them. We are the only one that he has shared them with. So it is an evening, an evening to remember and something that you will never forget. So please plan to come. I do have a signup book for that. 9/11 Remembrance, I believe it's a Sunday. It's going to be at 9:45. It will be in the Bistro Courtyard. We will do a short service, and Stephen Kraus will come in to blow tabs. And I'm so excited to tell you that we again are going to be able to do the lunch for our first responders. This is a first responder lunch. Residents unfortunately are not invited to it, but you can come and you can welcome them and thank them for everything that they do, and it will be on Thursday, September 8th. And it is for all of our fire department, our police department, and all of the support people. This is just Walnut Village's way of saying thank you. If we hadn't had COVID, this would have been the 10th year that we've done this particular program. Thank you, everybody. Please participate in our activities. My department's trying really hard. Everything should be resident centered. Come to me and tell you what, you know, tell us what you want to do. Ryan's team and my team sat together the other, yesterday, trying to think of some other ways that we could get more involvement. Before COVID, you all did everything. Now you just don't want to come out. And I'm going to change that. So thank you for being at Walnut Village.
Thank you, Judy. Always, always trying to improve the world. Ryan, you're next. I think I'm at the right place setting for your.
Morning, everyone. This will be really short. Just a friendly reminder, we have our drum circle tomorrow morning. Since Judy doesn't have her peace makers outing, I expect at least maybe four more at least that we're going to go to that at least. But hopefully you come, and hope it's a good time. Bang some drums, make some noise, play some rhythms. It's kind of nice to spend an hour or so with Jose. Also, another reminder that on Monday is our quarterly balance screening that we do once every couple months so we can kind of track everyone's progress and hopefully not lack thereof. You're all making progress, I know that. So just a friendly reminder, come by. It's very, very short and quick. Only takes about five minutes. There's like four short little tests. And if you've come before, hopefully we can continue that progress and forward momentum. Questions? Suzanne? Everything else is usual, yes. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Ryan's always short and sweet on his presentations, in and out. All righty. So I always want to kind of let you know what's going on with residents here. So unfortunately, Phyllis Griner in Summer House 2 passed away on August 1st. Jim Stark in Summer House 10 passed away on August 7th. We do have, as you know, Sharon Voight moving in today or tomorrow. Some furniture will start moving in. Very nice lady. You're going to really enjoy her. I think she's going to fit in perfectly into 345. So go by and say hello. And I'm going to invite Sandy up here to talk about things that are going on in Resident Care Department. I'm a little shorter. Hello, everyone. All right, so I hate to talk about scams, but it keeps coming up. So a big one is from Amazon, but not really from Amazon. They say they're from Amazon, talking about how you've purchased an iPhone 11 for $900. You either get it in a phone call or a text, and many of us have gotten that. That is a scam. Just ignore it, hang up, delete it. It's not true. What they want you to do is to either call back or press one or two, and then they have you. Another thing is the Medicare and Medicaid scam. Another phone call that's been coming in. Again, just hang up. And don't say yes. Thank you, Judy. The good thing is just hang up. If you don't know, just hang up. If you get one of those calls and you're not sure, look up the phone number for those companies and call them directly. Also, we've had where people have popped up. There's been a pop up on the computer. Do not click or call the phone number on that. If you're not sure, just give me a call. And if you can X out of that on the computer, do that or shut down the computer and start over. All right, and on a better note, we are deciding volunteer of the year. So we've gone through all the numbers, and we have our top six volunteers. And I'm going to read who they are and some of the things that they've done, and you get a chance to vote on who you want the volunteer of the year to be. Not today, a ballot will go out. So the first one is Bob Krishfield, and he's done, as you know, the Zoom happy hour. He spends about four to five hours per session to prepare for that happy hour. He does a blog called The Village News, and if you don't know that, visit that. He spends about five to 10 hours a week. Plus, he puts all the weekly memos in that. So if you miss a memo, it's on the blog. He also participates in Corral and does any tech associated with that. He did an internet survey and analysis, which took weeks to put together. He does the photo directory. He's on the earthquake committee and does presentations to outside investor groups. And then we have Judy Phillips, who is on the earthquake preparedness committee, meeting every other month. Also, the music committee chair is part of the Golden St. Andalines in Lakewood to perform for the public. Teachers Mahjong outside of the game to beginners. Does the birthday show every three months, rehearses three to four hours a week for that, and sometimes drives people or picks up prescriptions for the residents. And then we have Bernie Hawkman, who you know is the president of the resident council. Spends 60 to 70 hours per month preparing for resident council and also on the philanthropy committee. And then we have Terry Taylor, who works in the library, is on the earthquake committee, birthday show, helps Judy with various activities, and helped a lot with the local aid network that we did with Nadine way back. And then Michelle Voight in the library. She does the library newsletter, redesigns, helps redesign and grow the book collection, which I'm sure you've noticed. Had a Zoom with the Anaheim Library, a live presentation with the LA Public Library, did a lot of home delivery during pandemic with books. In charge of the Kindles, which she checks out, manages and instructs people how to use them. On the Reader's Advisory, and also attended and helped organize the future of front porch and Walnut Village Internet Systems and Computers. And then we have Don Baldwin, volunteers for the Anaheim PD. And on that, he does patrol, training and briefing, the PACE program, awards and promotion services, VIPS, which is the Volunteer Patrol Service, the graduation and field exercises, the National Night Out for Anaheim PD, Flag Day and Fourth of July Parade. And then with Anaheim Fire and Rescue, he's part of the CERT program, monthly meetings and exercises, CPR, Stop the Bleed, Red Cross Training and Certification, CERT Zoom meetings, field exercises and training. He's part of CTA Certified Tourism Ambassador, Zoom and Review Sessions. And at Walnut Village, does church preparation and readings, and also helped a few residents transport to UCI. So you will get all that information in a ballot and get to choose who the volunteer of the year for last year is. So thank you. So just look over the information. Vote for whoever you think is deserving of volunteer of the year for 2021. And return your ballots to Ernest by September 12th. And you can also give that to the front desk, and they'll give that to him. And then the winner will be announced at the next town hall, September 16th. How about a big hand for all of our volunteers? They're pretty amazing, aren't they? All those hours? And so want to leave you with one more thought, acknowledging all of the volunteer hours and how hard they work and get back to the community. Just a reminder for all of us. We can go to the next slide. We can't help everyone, but everyone can help someone. So it's worth remembering. In the meantime, we'll wrap it up. But does anyone have any questions? Don, we'll get you another. Thank you. Get you another microphone so everyone can hear your question.
I'm still relatively displeased with the lack of communication relating to whom has acquired the virus here. In the past, I was told that, well, we can't give that information out because of a program called HIPAA, which is to help ensure its privacy. Since we closed our care center, my research tells me that act no longer applies to us.
Resident has a right to privacy, so we can't disclose anything without them giving us permission to.
That would be the end of our next sentence. If you feel that that can be done, I don't see anything wrong with asking the person who is afflicted, do you mind if I inform Dick Ray and ask him to put it on the network? If there's somebody here that has it, I want to know. I want to avoid that person. I want to make sure that I have kept in contact with that person lately. And I have underlying issues that concern me.
So we actually have to obviously isolate that person as soon as they become positive. And then we do contact tracing, anyone that they've been around, and we notify them, and we also watch them. So again, you know, we could certainly ask people. I would suspect most people don't really want that broadcast, but we can ask. But personal rights does trump your right to know who's sick, especially since we have procedures and protocols to keep that person isolated, quarantined, and then to reach out to anybody who may have been in contact with that person. I ended the meeting a little too short. I want to bring up Linda Brandt, Vice President of Resident Council. She's going to talk a little bit more about the community carnival. I apologize.
This will be quick. In case you haven't heard, the executive board and the committees are going to have an event. It is not going to be a committee fair. It is going to be a committee carnival. There will be prizes. There will be games, eight of them. There will be food and a big raffle. Please save November 2nd from 10 to 12 noon for this event. And you will be hearing much more about it in the days to come. You'll be receiving three flyers. And this year...
And this year, I have a co-chair who is Elaine Quick. If you go to the Who Am I, you're going to understand how I'm, how happy I am about this because she's a great co-chair. If you have any questions, you can contact her or you can contact myself.
Thank you, Linda, and I apologize for not putting you on one of the slides. My, my bad. But hopefully you'll all join us for the fair. It's gonna be a lot of fun and hopefully drum up some interest in joining committees. So any other questions? Guys are quiet today. Well, you know where my door is. Come on in if you have a question. In the meantime, have a great Friday. Enjoy, stay cool and don't forget to come to the luau next Thursday. Take care.